We're live?
We are... Live.
Live.
Sit there. It's okay. You sure? That was for you? That was just a reserve, seriously.
All right, good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is November 25th, 2025. This is the 8pm with the clerk with administrative officer called.
All right, Councilman Hassan?
Present.
Councilman Hassan, mayor?
Yes, present.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Let's turn it off.
Turn it off.
Councilman Sazman?
Present.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
All right, mayor, we have a call.
Thank you, please rise for the vote. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, particularly for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any community announcements?
No community announcements.
All right. Looks like we have one proclamation or one presentation. Template for RFPs, a tool for efficient development of city-owned land. Is Ezebaldo gonna do it?
Yes. Can I, Omar, I don't know if you can just advance the, like, scroll through the PDF with the slides for me?
Okay. I don't have them up right now, but you're gonna have to give me a second. I got you.
That's fine.
If you want to get started, Ezebaldo, then we'll go from there.
Sure. Good evening, council. For your reference, this is the presentation, what it looks like in your packet. You'll recognize it. We're excited to share some work that CEB has been doing on to develop this as a tool for Hamtramck. It's aligned with the economic recovery planning work that you'll recall we presented to you in the spring of this year. And the focus of that plan, and I would say our department as a whole, is to help figure out how best to spur and guide economic recovery and development in Hamtramck. And there's one tool we haven't used for that, which we should. It's RFPs, a request for proposals. We use requests for proposals all the time when there's a contract or a large project the city wants to take on. And we can use it for land and development as well. So it's a best practice approach, and we've created a template for use in the future. We wanted to share it with you and the community, so you're in the loop about the approach and what we've been working on. An RFP, as I said, is a request for proposals. It invites bidders who would bid on land to submit projects to us that are essentially bids that we look at according to more guidelines than just a price. Because we know that in order to make sure that we're getting the maximum benefit for the community, sometimes there are things that matter more than dollars, although we know dollars do matter a lot. So because we haven't used an RFP before, we're missing out on the opportunity to attract private investment that's specific to our city goals and also to have a more direct hand in, like, guiding development projects. And I think, are we able to get the slides up for this next part?
No, we're not gonna be able to. I'm sorry, we're not gonna be able to do it right now.
Okay, that's fine. So, RFPs matter for several reasons, referring to this next slide, which unfortunately, people in the community, you could pull this up on the board docs link. The title of the presentation is "A Template for RFPs." RFPs matter because it lets the city set expectations about what we want to have happen with certain properties. So we know this idea has the power essentially to say we want to see a certain outcome from an investment or a project. It helps us be the most transparent and fair and then also solicit competitive bids for projects. It helps incorporate the community vision and also ensure that we can build in community engagement with different projects. There's a pretty basic process that we would use to solicit these proposals. So first, we'd choose a site, we would draft the request, we'd publish that publicly in the paper, on the city website, on different bid networks. Then we'd take the submissions and review them. We'd score them according to the scoring metric that I included in the presentation as well as a draft. And then we'd bring it to council for approval, just like any other sale of property. It allows us then also to negotiate with the developer about what benefits to both parties, the city and the developer, would make the most sense for the project. It helps us kind of guide the project well also in terms of the legal policy and framework, so everything is done in compliance of the Open Meetings Act, for Netsfoya accessible. And we also are able to have more of a hand-in-hand relationship with the developer so that we can advise closely about zoning and planning matters that might come up. So in the template that you can access in the presentation and the preview of that, essentially, we just want to make sure that developers understand why they should invest in Hamtramck. We use different sections to highlight the benefits that we see in developing in Hamtramck, which include all of the really excellent work we're doing on infrastructure projects, water pressure improvements and sewer line improvements, all of our lead service line replacement. We have flexible zoning, we have exciting initiatives like the tree planting project, we have really high rates of growth in our business districts, and our property values are increasing. And when we set up this template, first, we give a background that essentially makes the case for why we think Hamtramck is great and they should build here, or why if they are already a member of the community, why they should invest more. And then it describes the specific properties, describes how we would collaborate with them about incentives that might be available, and then gives instructions in details. Basically, what we're looking for is a clear proposal and an idea from a developer. We want to encourage people to bid who have strong prior experience building projects. We want them to understand our design and our context and have a solid financial plan for how they'd accomplish and do so on schedule. As far as what our internal process would look like, as I said, we'd review that material and just like a grant award or something else, we'd ask for council's approval to approve the project. It's not, as I said, something that Hamtramck has done much before, but we absolutely have the capacity to do so. And I think it's a step in the right direction. We're excited about it and wanted to share with you. I'm open to any questions if council or the community has.
Mr. Mayor, do other cities have the same requirement or does something?
Yes, other cities consider our RFPs, or cities, I would say, do issue RFPs for properties very often, especially ones that they might consider, you know, one that ideal location or could have a really strong community benefit.
But how much? I'm sorry, go ahead.
And to make sure that it's a strong, strong project that gets awarded.
How much residential land and business land do you have available to bring those kinds of resolution? I mean, we don't have a whole lot of land like other cities have.
That's correct.
And if we make more requirements, if we make more requirement, don't you think we make it more harder for people to invest, investment to the city? Because always sometimes some people complain that when we're gonna do something, we have to go through too much in this Hamtramck city.
Sure, it's a good concern. I mean, we want people to take advantage of the development properties that are available. I think what this offers is more of a benefits negotiation process in which someone might come to us and say, all right, I have, I have a specific vision for this, this parcel, but I think I would need maybe a special land use. Well, we could, as a part of the negotiation process and the sale, say, we think that, you know, if you can give us a higher price, perhaps we would waive a certain requirement. We could talk about tax incentives. I think there's a lot to attract the developer to the process, and also it makes Hamtramck look, I think, more competitive and professional as a part of the development landscape. You're right, we don't have a lot of residential properties left. I myself helped close out the auction of many of the parcels that we were left with after the residential development lot sale. But I think because we don't have a lot of empty land, we have to be really wise about what we do choose to do with it. So that's why we explored this as an option for the future.
Mr. Mayor? So are we putting any timeframe to the bidders so that they can get done within a certain timeframe or?
Yeah, we would absolutely do that. We'd publish ideas, or we'd publish the request for proposal with enough notice so that it was publicly available, and then set a certain date that we'd like to receive proposals by so that we could take a look at them. These are hypothetical dates for future.
Yes, call.
How many of the builder getting a tax intensive or residential building, new building, he get the tax intensive?
It's not guaranteed as a part of this, but tax incentives are sometimes things that a city will bring to the table.
So how many do practice so far? None?
None, we haven't done this yet at all. It's something that we, we think we should use as a tool in the future.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, council.
She just spoke to us. It is something to near to the Hamtramck city. So we'll think about it and we can go forward later on.
All right, any more questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next is the additions and additions to the agenda. Do we have any?
Yes, we need to add the house in 3381 dreams. We talked last month, need to add this resolution 3381 dreams.
What about house, what resolution?
So I think, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that is, try to, the resolution council meeting last time, 3381, the, the was tax foreclosure to the Wayne County. Previous practice we have done, same thing even, practice given to the, back to the owner as the reasonable price. And I'm seconded.
So that, that would be K?
Mr. Mayor, make sure we have.
I give the vote on that one first.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need, so you motioned Hassan's second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
So adding the house. So that would be resolution 140, K140. And then L, the next one.
I'd like to add the resolution that city for focus offered from Wayne County 11405, 11409, and 11415 comment, and considering giving back to the owner as a reasonable price as previous practice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, now, any more additions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to add one more resolution. City manager just brought it to us. Resolution approving, approval to the upgrade council's Mbers video system. There is a lots of complaint coming from the people, residents, halfway a video gone, halfway a video stay. So that is going to be the resolution number 142. So may, Mr. Manager, can you give to the resolution to the elected official?
Yes.
Yes.
Second. All right, who seconded?
Yes.
Stand, all in favor of adding this?
Aye.
Aye.
That's the resolution. I was running into an issue with the printer upstairs.
Okay, so I have, I have one over here to leave to mail. Leave to mail.
You have to also remove that B to fit.
Yes, yeah, there was one more resolution. B and D are the same. We are laughing at each, at ourselves because DNR, MDNR, Michigan DNR, and the Michigan Department of Natural Resources are in fact the same entity. So we can go through B, it's the exact same as D, but we.
We don't have to remove it, just when we get to it, we pass.
Yeah, or you go there.
Yeah, I noticed that when I was reading it, almost sixteen.
Yeah.
All right, so, all right, so we will move now to the public comment, first round of public comment.
Did we go on the amended agenda? I'm sorry.
No, I think we need a motion to.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second. All in favor of approving the amended agenda? Okay, thank you. So amended agenda approved, and we can move to the public comment now.
Do we turn on the microphone too, or just leave it off?
You're good.
You can try, it's gonna work.
Okay, I'll just leave it as is, I guess, right now. All right, so first one, we have resident Nurul Islam. This was an email. I am Nurul Islam, here to address serious misconduct that has become widely known within our community regarding the Hamtramck Police Department. I am informing you despite the fact that these concerns are already well-known among city officials and within the department that members of the Hamtramck Police have allegedly been involved in unauthorized illegal investigations targeting their own residents. The reported actions include recording citizens' phone calls without consent or lawful warrant, tracking and monitoring residents without judicial authorization, hiring private investigators without any official approval, documentation, or legal justification. Additionally, there are ongoing concerns that the Hamtramck Police Department has been providing favors to friends and associates with city, within city leadership disregarding established procedures, ethical obligations, and public accountability. These behaviors, if accurate, represent severe violations of civil rights, privacy laws, and professional police standards. I respectfully request that the appropriate oversight office conduct a thorough and independent investigation into these allegations, verify whether any warrants, legal authorizations, or official policies exist supporting these actions, identify any officers or officials involved in unauthorized activities, provide a written response confirming receipt of this complaint outlining the next steps in the investigation. The residents of Hamtramck deserve transparency, accountability, and a police department that upholds the law rather than violating it. These issues must be addressed promptly and publicly to restore trust in local government, I'm sorry, in local enforcement. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I look forward to your response. Next up, we have Ms. Cheryl Hall.
Good afternoon, you are. My concern is, it's a lot of favoritism and code enforcement, that shouldn't be. We all supposed to be treated equally. To hell with the color, your skin, your nationality, because we all one, and our blood is red. When you get sick, you not asking who blood is, all you wanna do is live. And Hamtramck is filthy, they don't make them sweep up or rake up or nothing, and it don't make no sense. They not, uh, we had a code enforcement for littering, they don't enforce that. I remember Judge Baruch made me pay a hundred and twenty dollars for throwing three cigarette bucks up there in your shopping class when Rite Aid was up there. You see all these plastic bottles and stuff. Teach the people how to rake their yards and clean up and stuff. That make your property look good. What are we getting for our tax dollars? We don't even get our streets swept. How they gonna sweep this side and don't sweep the other side? We have to pay a hundred dollars for our garbage containers. They're the same ones we had when GFL was there. Priority didn't replace us with no new ones. It just don't make no sense how Hamtramck is dirty and whatnot. Enforce the code law, make them clean up. Throwing plastic bottles down, I never seen so many water bottles. And it don't make no sense. And house furniture on the porch, that's against code enforcement. On plastic bottles. And it's not right. Shame on all of you. Do your job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Ahmed Sharaf.
Two people before me, but that's fine.
Salaam alaikum, good evening. Ahmed Sharaf, a human rights activist for 20 years and a generalist. I'm here to announce something in Arabic, and I'm sorry, we have our honorable mayor, he's gonna translate it as he does for his kindness. اليوم نقدم شكوى، والشكوى هذه تعتبر دعوة رسمية to all Americans in Hamtramck. إلى مجلس بلديها مشاركة الموقر، قسم الشون القانونية، قسم الشرطة أيضا، قسم الإسكان، نكتب العمد الموقر. الموضوع: شكوى رسمية بخصوص التحريض على العنف والقذف العلني، نشر معلومات مظللة للتهديد المباشر وغير المباشر واستغلال النفوذ والسلطة. السادة المحترمة، أتقدم إليكم بهذه الشكوى بخصوص سلسلة من الوقاع الخاطيرة التي تعرض لها أنا وأطفالي وأسرتي داخل مدينة هامtramck، والتي تمس سلامة العامة، حرية الصحافة، حقوق الدستورية، وحقي في الأمان الشخصي، حتى أن وصل الأمر إلى طفلة إلى المدرسة. أولاً نشر ادعاء كادبة وتوضيح الرأي العام. قام المدعو لقمان صالح، مدير إحداسالة الأعراس، مرشح سابق خاسر للانتخاب أر، وهارض لك نكستاين. بنشر بيانات يزعم فيها بأنني تقدمت بشكوى، شكوى رسمية ضد الصالح التي يعمل بها من دون تقديم أي دليل، وهذا على حسابها الشخصي. هذا الإدعاء المظلل أدى إلى إثارة الشق والعداء ضدّي وضد أطفالي وأسرتي داخل المجتمع. قام بتصويري سرا وتوزيع الصورة على المجتمع في هامtramck حتى خارج هامtramck للإساءة بسمعتي. سبق للمدعو لقمان صالح أن أقام بتصويري سرا أثناء حضور حفل الزفاف ابن الأخ حكما مسمر. وبعد ذلك قام بتوزيع الصورة إلى المجتمع المحلي، ذاك من فضلك، على أنه دليل أنني أقوم بتصوير الناس سرا للضرار بهم. وهو أمر غير صحيح على الإطلاق، ويشكل اعتداء على الخصوص وقدفا صريحًا. السكود على تهديدات خطيرة وصلت إلى التهديد بتفجير منزل. وفقا ما توفر لدي قام عم لقمان الذي يعمل لدى جماعة الحوتيين بتهديد خطير وصلت حد الوعيد بتفجير منزل والسب والقذف العلني بغرض إرغامي على عدم المشاركة في حق السوري والصحفي المهفو لدى الولايات المتحدة الأمريكية. ولم يقوم لقمان أو حملته الانتخابات بإداره هذا السلوك أو التنصل منه، مما يعد تهديدا مباشرًا للأمن وسلامة أحد مواطنية الولايات المتحدة الأمريكية. خلال الانتخابات قامت حملة لقمان صالح بالسب والقذف العلني وإثارة الفوضى والتعرض لي في مناسبات متعددة لمحاولة منع وممارسة حقي الدستورية. خابسا التحريض على العنف غير المباشر في بث مباشر ظهر المدعو ساري أحمد المعروف باسم تركي نهشل أحد العاملين في حملة لقمان في بث مباشر يدعو فيه الناس للاعتداء عليه شخصيا مدعيا زورا أنني خطر على المجتمع وأن شرطة هامtramck والمدينة على علم بذلك دون تقديم أي دليل. طبعا تركي نهشل تربطه علاقة مصالح مع لقمان. قد قام حافظة يافعي ابن عم مدير الصالح وإداري في أحد جوامع المدينة بتأيد هذا التحريض علنا في تعليق على البث المباشر مستغل لمكنته الاجتماعية والدينية لتشويه سمعتي وتعريض عائلتي للخطر. سادسا استغل أحدهم المحلات التجارية قام عصام المريسي الذي يملك محل عطورات باستدعاء تركي نهشل إلى متجره واستغلال المكان للتحريض ضدّي ونشر اتهامت مسيالي ما يضع الأمر في خايف استخدام منشأ تجارية للتحريض على الكرهية والإساءة لشخصي. ذاك واحد أكمل طلب.
We already gave you the mail. Okay, the ten second, the ten second that I'm asking, the 10 second if you would. التمس لمجلسكم الموقر فتح تحقيق رسمي في جميع الوقاع، طلب تسجيل للبث المباشر، مخاطبة الشرطة لفتح ملف شامل حول التهديد، لزاما المدعو لقمان وصالح ل給提供 توضيح في بيان رسمي اتخاذ الإجراءات اللازمة لحماية وحماية أسرتي، عدم استغلال منشأة تجارية في المدينة للتحريض، التأكد من عدم وجود أي خرق للقوانين الأمريكية. شكرا. I would like you please to address the main concern, Mr. Mayor. So basically, if you miss any point, that's all here. That's so much to translate. Usually, there was a comment on social media that says, people talk for three minutes and the mayor only translates for one minute. I don't go and translate every single word. I translate the idea and the concept. So it's common sense. It's weird that some adults complain about this, like, there's difference in the language where I can summarize a whole sentence in one word in Arabic. So I'm going to translate just the main concept. So basically, basically, he's complaining about some kinds of threats and privacy violations and abuse of power by some people in the city. Some of them were candidates for the city council. He named one person, Luqman Salah, with a group of people. He named multiple people, including some relatives and some media people. I can remember Saari Ahmed and Asam Almriisi and Haad Al Yafi, he mentioned those three names. Basically, he's saying that they violate his rights and he received some threats and they accuse him of things that he is not doing, and some threats breached his family and his kids and school and they accuse him of things that he didn't do. And he's asking the city to take actions to expose those people and to hold them accountable. So that's, that's a lot, but the, the whole three pages are here. Somebody wants to read them in Arabic. So he's asking to open investigation about those people and what they have done toward him, asking for the video recordings and the investigations, and asking the police to take action and open files about those threats and situations that happened toward him. Asking the person he named to clarify his stance in an official statement, taking actions to protect him from any threats, investigation about those stores that he mentions owned by some people that I mentioned earlier, and making sure that public safety is a priority in Hamtramck in addressing those concerns and those threats. So thank you and. I'm sorry for interrupt, but there's a mainly thing that he said that I apply a complaint to the city manager and you guys against his, oh, does that happen? Anyone receive a complaint from me personally, the city? City manager, did I? No. Thank you. Thank you. So. God bless, thank you. All right, next up, Ali Hamid.
Salaam alaikum. Hello, everyone. My name is Ali Hamid. I'm resident next door to Azal Hall. I've been waiting for the, the problem to lift it from me and from my family. I'm getting next month 70 years old, and I wanna live like anybody else with a piece. Now I can't. They make me go very, very in a corner. I can't do anything, so I can't tell my kids to go to play outside. I buy the kids some bicycles, they can't even ride it anywhere. So I'm waiting almost one year since the mayor said we can do some things, almost a year to now. Now the second time. Now the second time is almost the second week coming next week. And I want everyone to give me a hand to lift my problems from my family. I'm asking everyone to help, to give me freedom to live the rest of my life within a peace. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. So he contacted me the other day and his son. And I told them, when there's a violation, somebody is parking in the wrong spot, somebody is violating your privacy, is parking in front of your house. You call the police. The police has instructions to take actions. Give violations to those people who park in the wrong spot or speed in front of your house. Whatever happens, it doesn't matter, even if you call 10 times a day. If there's a violation, the police will come and take care of it. When it comes to the alley, this is a public property. We cannot accommodate, given that the city's properties, so we can fix problems. That's not gonna happen. Because I got calls from other people, they said, "If you make these alleys dysfunctional because of some people, we want to close our alleys as well." So we can do that. But the city is studying and analyzing this problem and we will take action to correct this problem without violation, without violating anyone's rights, without taking anybody's properties. But without also giving away the city's properties. So the city manager is on it, the police department, but they have an instruction. If anybody is violating your rights, you just call the police, they will take action and they will take care of that. And hopefully, we will reach out a solution soon.
I have to cut?
No, no, you can't, no more.
Okay.
Next up, Yusuf Mohammed.
Salaam alaikum.
Salaam.
We are in the city of Aling. And we are disappointed that our cars are blocked. That they leave from the construction site of Azal. And they brake in front of the buses and in front of the buses. And we have declared that they will leave. And they said, "Leave your cars."
Thank you. He's saying that he cannot drive his bicycle in the alley because he's afraid that the speeding car can hit him. Because they park in the wrong spot and they speed off. Again, whenever that happens, the police will take care of it. They know they have instructions to address this issue. City manager is on it. They will try to reach a solution, like I said, that's reasonable and acceptable by the city and by the residents.
All right, next up we have Munadah Hamid.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Munadah Hamid, 21, 14 Holbrook Street. I'm here to see if there's any update with the city council regarding the issues that we have. And today I would like to add another story, which is, we do respect everybody's family. And we do have families. Your families, guys, you always come to park. By our house, we never made a complaint and I need you guys to know that. We always respect families, we no matter what. So we're not gonna make no complaints if there's any females. So as we said, this is yesterday. We didn't make no complaint because this is not our rule. So me and Weheth today, we would like to address the issue. We would like to follow the city council and we would like to close the process as soon as possible. And just because we have people coming from overseas and every time they finish the party, whatever is going on in city hall, they always pass up before they leave. That's because they're not from overseas. I have heard the city council saying, you know, they've been taking care of the issue, but then have anybody get tickets in the alley? No. We have a mask by our house and we have people always driven, you know, being respectful. We don't see police by the mask. We see them on Holbrook Street. So we have two cats just been lost, which is they've been getting run over in front of our house and we have, I could get hit. Please, we would like to stop violence. We would like the issue to be taken care of and I appreciate you.
Have you ever called the police when there's a violation, a car parked in the wrong spot?
We always do, except females.
It doesn't matter, male or female, everybody should follow the rules. But when the police comes, do they take care of it? Do they give violations or not?
Can I talk?
Yeah.
So what if it was from your family? If an I call it?
It doesn't matter, they should know where to park. They shouldn't park in front of you.
You should, we have signs, they shouldn't read, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So do you call and the police, this is my question?
We always go.
You call, the police should come and give violations, give tickets.
Absolutely, absolutely. We just respect our community because I don't want police to come, to go through where there's females and just, I hope you understand that part.
It's not just females, anybody, because you can't tell if it's a male or female. If there's a car parked wrong in front of your property, blocking your house, you call the police, they will come and take care of it.
Even if it's females?
It doesn't matter. Everybody should follow the rules, males or females.
I haven't had respect.
When you give your driver license, male or female, you learn the same rules.
Absolutely.
Right?
Absolutely.
So anybody who violates the rules should be ticketed. I'm giving this order to the city manager to give it to the police. Whenever there's a violation, whenever there's someone blocking your alley, call the police, they will take care of it. Until we find a solution, okay?
I promise, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we got Mark Corry.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Just want to mention, I did notice something on the new business, the 7A discussion, establishing a police oversight committee. This is something that's been in the public discussion since last 15 years. First time I've ever put it on a council agenda and I congratulate the people who put it on here because it needs to be done. Just like to point out, I was involved, establishment of the Ann Arbor City Police Oversight Board. It's worked out well. The city paid $200,000, have a consulting firm drop the entire blueprint for a police oversight board. I don't think it's necessary to have it done here. I think there's a, like I know there's a nonprofit organization that actually assists cities in establishing a board for free. They'll do it, they'll give you what you need there because they see it's important and they're funded by, you know, various individuals, organizations. And it's something that we need here, definitely, there's no question. It served city Detroit well and it passed in 1973 in response to the 67 riots where the police everyone was out of control there. They killed how many people during the riots there, or the people died during the riots, 67. And it's helped still operate today. In fact, the chapel that does our implications actually works for me as a serving papers. So I know what goes on with city Detroit. In fact, it's not too far from here, you can go down, it's just a few miles from here, they have their monthly meetings. So this is a good step in the right direction. If it passes, the councils, I hope it does. And I'd just like to give my firm's support, like Bill Meyer today, he didn't even know it was on here. He was out in Oregon and he says, "Yeah, I can't be down there, but you can tell him that it is my support." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corry. I need you up.
Good. All right. Bramel Gheb.
Governor, Mayor, Council, City Manager, Deputy Chief, and Attorney. Today, I go on the first email that was sent regarding the police department. That's not a surprise. And I got some information that the Hamtramck Police Department is going after some council candidates. I don't think that's their job. The state police should handle it. You see, someone federal, bring the FBI in. It's a conflict of interest for the police department to go after their own council members. The second thing is, I'm happy to see the establishment of police oversight committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council, and we really need that. Thank you.
Last one, Kazim Ahmed.
Good evening, honorable mayor, respectable council members, respectable team and city officials. I first wanna, from the bottom of my heart, wanna thank you for, I, out of desperation, I sent, I copied you on an email. And you took action. That takes character. And I think this city will miss that, but I'm not saying, you know, your personality, you know, the way, what you, you know, you listen. And then you speak. So that meant a lot to me and thank you so much for your guidance. I was just lost what to do in this situation. You really, you know, helped me, you know, deal with the situation. And then, as it relates, you know, a little bit to the police oversight committee, we, you know, policing is a tough job. You know, the, think about somebody with a weapon, you're pulling, you know, you're stopping a car, you don't know what that person has. They're putting their life on the line and, you know. So, but, but we don't count the 99 good actions that they're doing, you know, you know, thefts are down, you know, vandalism are down, all of this stuff. It doesn't, so, human character is the one thing that went a little over. So I hope that, you know, the statement that being on the top of the, you know, agenda, it doesn't reflect that the police department is wrong, doing something wrong. I think if that means a public, you know, it's just open forum where people can bring in and discuss and then we can set an example in this city. I think, you know, let's just look for that instead of looking for, you know, the police officers, you know, they cannot do their job, right? It should be, you know, they are following instructions. If we can look at the instructions and give examples, you know, because, you know, city residents, sometimes they don't know all the laws because this is a heavily limited community. And, you know, education, life experiences has a lot to do with it. So I welcome the honorable committee, you know, the council to put that on the agenda. And I just hope that it only, you know, takes the police and, you know, and the resident relationship to the next level. Because without, you know, the other side is that the police is inactive. This is a very bad, you know, it quickly become a bad place. And so I hope that we find that we tolerate each other and, you know, find, you know, good resolution for ourselves. But I, I hope you stay involved in public somehow, life, I think you have the, you have the knack for it. I wish you all the best and I sincerely appreciate it. You know, I copied you in the email and you took action, so appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for this. There's one more meeting left. They don't say goodbye yet. No, no. All right, we have a long agenda here, so try to move fast. So next is the consent agenda, this is approved in a single motion with no discussion. We have approval of minutes from the October 28, 2025, 2025 regular city council meeting. B, approval of minutes from the November 18, 2025 special city council meeting. C, approval of phone voice registered based on November 25, 2025. D, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending November 25, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, we move to the new business and we have the first item discussion on establishing a police oversight committee.
Go for a second.
All right.
So for this one, if we could create a subcommittee to meet, I can meet with the subcommittee, we can go over the terms of it together. We can come and present it to the council at the next meeting or whenever we have already. But I think a subcommittee and then Mr. Corry's comments were right on point. I've looked at Ann Arbor's to try to guide me and it's really well done. And we could use that for our guide and I didn't know that there were nonprofits or whatever that could help us. I can look into that, but we can also just do it as a subcommittee and we can go, we can discuss it together. And if we need help, then maybe we can get some. But I think a subcommittee would be...
So it's gonna be the description, what this committee have to write?
So the committee would be to determine the terms of any police oversight committee ordinance. So we can come up with an ordinance and then we'd have a public hearing and then a second and then we can pass it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, officer.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney, discussion. We do have, thank you, attorney, Bill Myers, the other community members. They've been requesting me all those things long time ago. So last council meeting, I have a format ready, I already discussed the one. So this is, it's not the we-doing intention. If Ann Arbor can do it, why not do it? It is not against the police. It is the relationship between the community and police. Sometime, somebody go little above the head, some of the staff, maybe residents, maybe officers. There is the somewhere we can bring these things together. And there is the previous lots of lawsuits in this city. So that, that brings us, expend a lot of money to give them diversity training. I'm one of them, approve that. So that's why it is important and we need to do it. And I agree with the subcommittee. And we, this subcommittee will work with the city attorney and also lots of nonprofit organization. I already had a discussion talk and Attorney Corry, I thank you. So we will format together, we don't have enough money to give the money to make the, all those paperwork and the, those things ready. So yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the subcommittee today before we finish the discussion. Thank you.
All right, sounds good. So like we said, it's not something against the police or it doesn't represent mistrust or distrust with the police. It's just a step toward improving the relationship between the community and the police and improving the communication with the police. Providing some assistance and guidance to the police as well. So we can go ahead with forming a subcommittee. Usually, when we form a subcommittee, I think two, two people are chosen by the mayor and the third person by the city council. But I, you know, we have to look at the future of the city council, so we have to choose a subcommittee that, from the new elected people. Because we may need you after forming the subcommittee as well. So Hassan should be one, since you are very proactive on this. I can help you for the next month, but I, I mean, still gonna be here, but...
You're not going nowhere, are you?
So who else is interested? Kansama Abu Musa or Eli or maybe Kansama Sumail?
I do like to be a subcommittee, but it is, I agree with you, it is not against the police. It is a bridge for the community and police. There are a lot of things, soon other things, maybe if you can work together, we decrease those, a lot of issue with community and...
So I would recommend also Sumail to be part of this. Are you okay? Yes, Sumail, okay. So how about you guys, the three of you, and I'll help you as long as I'm still here, okay? All right, sounds good. All right, so with that, any part of the discussion about this? All right, thank you, I think we're good with this item. We move to the next one, we have, this is duplicated.
B and B.
B and B, so we'll just discuss on B. So we have a solution 2025-121, approving acceptance of MDNR Urban and Community Forest Street ETE planting grant.
Go for a second.
Thank you, council. This is a small dollar grant that we applied for with the machine, DNR and DTE partnership. The city had applied for it in the past. We were unsuccessful, but now because we have the Groham Tramack project in full swing, they... they liked our application more because we have more community events and volunteers coming on. So this is a fund that's going to take about four thousand dollars to plant more trees in the parks that we might need beyond the hundred-tree maximum that we can plant through the Goham Tramic project. Or if any don't last through the winter, we have a great crew out there, but sometimes a new planted tree won't make it, so we can use this money to replace those trees at a community planting event in April.
Last, three thousand seven hundred fifty, that's the grant?
Yes, it is a small amount.
That's a one-week salary of Councilman Hassan.
If you'd like to donate that for more, you just let me know.
All right, well, thank you. Anything is useful for our city. No more hours, more than that. All right, any questions?
It's Hassan's.
All right, you can go ahead and vote.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmary?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-five one thirty-one is approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution twenty-twenty-five one thirty-two, authorizing city administration to increase contract with Data Guardian for building and planning archive scanning project.
Offer second.
Thank you. So in January of this year, the Building Department and CED brought a request to work with Data Guardian to digitize our blueprints and planning and building files. There were so many of them, filling cabinets of space, and we got a lot of requests, I told you earlier this year, for building plan documents or previous occupancy records, and we just, because it was just stacks of paper and cabinets of paper, we couldn't locate them easily to provide to residents and interested people who were asking us. So we were working with this company, and we unfortunately heard from them that the cost estimated would exceed the original amount by about fourteen thousand dollars, is what they estimate for multiple reasons. First, a lot of the plans that we had were so old that they required more work to scan and more man-hours to do that, and then also there were just more documents than they expected. So it's been about two hundred five thousand images so far, and over seven thousand individual files, over twenty-eight hundred large format plans. So there's just this last leg of work that has to be done. So we're asking for approval for this contract expansion, basically, so we can wrap this project up, and it'll be a really good benefit for the City Building Department and CED.
All right, so total cost is fourteen thousand eight hundred ninety-three, right?
Additionally, yes.
Yeah, that, yeah, fourteen thousand eight hundred ninety-three and fifty cents is the addition to the original contract.
How much was the we-do contract themselves?
It was approximately twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, there, a lot of the documents were just in a lot worse condition than we thought.
Sure.
All right. We can go ahead and vote with no questions.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmary?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-five one thirty-two has been approved.
Thank you. I will keep the same letters of each resolution, since D is canceled now. So we, Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash one thirty-four, approving the purchase of used Ford F-150 for the Community and Economic Development Department.
This is my last one, and then I'll leave you alone.
Let me get a motion. All right, go ahead.
What you gonna do with this?
Well, I'll tell you. So we have an initiative called the Every Neighbor Program, which helps senior residents or disabled folks who can't shovel their own snow, or rake their own leaves, or mow their own grass. And one of my staff members pairs volunteers in the community who can help people with that if they aren't able to do it themselves and they don't live with anyone. It helps a lot of seniors and disabled people who live alone. And we have a lot of equipment for that, and Code Enforcement has very nicely let us use a vehicle sometimes, but we need a dedicated one of our own to be able to transport that equipment and those supplies for volunteers. And we'd also use it for the night bazaar, and also when we have interns in the summer, use it as a vehicle to drive them around. So I went to dealerships to hunt for something used that is, I'm sure you'll recognize, a fraction of the cost of some of the other trucks that the city owns, but it has the extra seats in the back, and they extended a crew cab that we need for, to fit a lawnmower inside to drop off to volunteers and organize those community cleanups as well. So I appreciate if you would approve this. It would come out of the general fund, and we'd use it for a variety of initiatives.
If you buy the new one, I can help you big time, but...
You wanna sell me a new F-150 for twenty thousand dollars?
I can go out big time, but right now it's okay.
And I'm not gonna receive call, nobody gonna call me, please help me.
Transporting lawnmowers, I will not call you for that, yes.
Wow, he did it, that's amazing. It's okay, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any issue.
All right, we can go ahead and vote on that, please.
We got Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmary?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-five one thirty-four has been approved.
Thank you.
Since we approved everything to you, we need some grand money, please, look for some more.
I'll bring you more than four thousand dollars next time.
All right, next one is F, Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash one thirty-five, approving to implement multi-factor authentication citywide.
Offer second.
Good evening. I'm just gonna keep this short and sweet. This is to approve implementing multi-factor authentication citywide. This will be for police, fire, and every city hall employee. This is gonna add a much-needed layer of protection and added security to our networks and our data systems. I've seen an increase in cyber attack attempts. I do not like that. I want to circumvent, as well as get us compliant, bring us up to modern standards, and really bolster our security posture. This is being funded entirely by a grant. The only cost we'll incur after will be a monthly licensing cost. That cost is four hundred and forty-one dollars a month, and then we'll cover every token, is what the device is called. Then I'll cover the license for each one of those.
All right, thank you. Okay, yeah, we're still getting those random emails?
Yes.
In Japanese and all that?
Yep.
So, all right, I think...
No issue.
Go ahead.
I mean, this won't do anything for those emails, but this is a great step in the right direction. The Police Department needs to meet CGS requirements, and I don't think it's a bad idea for every city employee to be on a device that meets CGS requirements. It's just best practice to up our security the best way we can.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Alsmary?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-five one thirty-five is approved.
Thank you. Next one, Resolution two twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five dash one thirty-six, resolution to concur with the approval of the twenty-twenty-five South Gudson Alley east of Desaf campo, additional construction costs.
Offer second. Almost getting heart attack, additional.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as you are aware, the Gudson Alley next to Veterans Park was constructed. There was a few things during, so that contract was a contract extension to Dominic Gaglio construction. So obviously, it was an engineer's estimate when we looked at that. There's a few things that during the design process, talking with the city, that we implemented. One being the bump-out parking that was added, adding, you know, did four additional feet on, so that gave twenty-two, approximately twenty-two spots on that side of the park. The forward thinking on that was we knew the parking lot project was coming up. This would allow parking during that construction time, plus additional parking as once everything was completed. The other things that happened is, again, the forward thinking with the parking lot construction going on, I had to sit there and figure out a way to capture drainage and have that discharged. Obviously, with the sewer running down the alley, that was the most logical outlet for that back parking lot. So we need to add a doghouse manhole on top of the sewer that was currently there with a pipe coming out extending into the parking lot, so when they did the parking lot project, they could connect to that since the alley was gonna be completed before the parking lot. The other thing was the small alley between the Gudson, I guess the alley, the main alley, and Gudson Street. There is that alley that outlets onto Gudson. It just felt it was the right thing and the right time to get everything complete when we were doing an alley project. So why leave one small piece? So overall said, there's an additional cost. Our, I guess one thing I wanna bring in, is our construction management budget actually came in twelve thousand five hundred dollars under, so we have unused funds, so the city won't be billed for that, which that was already approved. So I did deduct that from the additional funds that needed approval, bringing the total of what we're asking for approval on of fifty-seven thousand four hundred eighty-six thousand and fifty cents.
So is there water, just on the sewer too, or...
That was just sewer. Yeah, so it's coming from the water and sewer.
We did approve it before when they start the, the other, the other side?
Did, I'm sorry, what was it?
We did approve, this is one thing. When we start the other, the other side from, while we down, we down, or maybe it's a small piece, cover houses.
From, from the beginning contract?
Yes.
Would you not add those things? That's why you ask.
So it was an engineer's estimate at the time, so we looked at the entire length of that alley, and that's how it was approved. So it was originally approved for five hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So what is the increase now?
So total completed construction cost is five hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty cents.
So small alleys need to be fixed. I, I remember when I was...
Yeah, it's a small alley that need to be, we fixed that.
And the cost...
We added on the additional parking, we had to do the sewer improvement because of the parking lot. There was like a few things that, you know, just, it made sense to do and get done. I was hoping things would come in, you know, as close to budget as possible, obviously, you know...
It's a little bit...
No, but this time they use some construction, they didn't do the gap, just... As the construction rate now is not same when they did the other alley.
It's a different contractor.
Yeah, this contract, they have every time complaint for the whole area.
Okay, we're talking...
They didn't do the new gap. They have many complaint, many complaint every day, every week.
So the alley construction that's currently going on is a completely different contractor?
Not only one alley, not only one alley.
I know it's for nine alleys.
Seven, eight alley, five, six years, seven years, no complaint for any alley we start working, only this company. Lost the other alley from seven years till now. No, not anyone complain, only those.
Understood. So the contractor that did the Gudson Alley is the contractor that you guys like. We understand that. We extended that contract to Dominic, which, or Mr. Gaglio. Unfortunately, well, I guess fortunately, the city received a grant for alley reconstruction. The unfortunate part with a grant is it has to go out to bid. We cannot extend a contract with it being grant funding. It has to go out to bid. Mark Anthony was the low bid on that. There was no reason to reject his bid, and that's, we, in order to utilize that grant money to do these other nine alleys that's separate from this alley, that's who we had to use. Those alleys have been completed, everything's been placed. We were on a call earlier today with the contractor. We'll be doing a punch list here, I'm hoping, early next week, where we get out there and walk the alleys and see if there's any deficiencies.
Sorry, I'm trying to say the quality of work.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's the quality of job is not matching what we expected to be. Also, a lot of people are complaining when their sidewalk been broken or fixed improperly, so those are things I think he's trying to mention.
Also, I have this issue too, Mr. John and Hennessy, as a supervisor, we got the contract, he bid the low price. It's not my fault, but we want our quality works.
Understood.
That's why he tried to, this is the gentleman, expend more time than anybody else.
Yeah, we have our walkthroughs left on those alleys yet, so...
So our construction managers are working diligently with the contractor, trying to get the contractor to understand. Working in these alleys is a, is a unique challenge to reconstruct these alleys.
And if we don't complain anything, that's okay, I'm getting the deal, do, 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 and go. So those types of thing, please pay more attention. That's why good quality of product we're gonna get, our construction we're gonna get. That's all our request. Okay.
Is this part of the, the sewer recording?
Yes, sir.
Maybe they are, they are gonna be infecting you, that's why I'm gonna take as many as they do.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's someone who complained to me about his fences is completely black metal. So after they fix the alley, half of it is white from the paint, like they spread it all over his fence, and he's like, who's responsible to fix this? So who's responsible?
I brought the, I brought the company out there to look at that, that will be taken care of.
Okay, good. Company, company. All right, good, thank you. Why should you answer it, Mr. Mayor? But those things we should not go and ask for it. That should be automatically fixed when you guys see it. I mean, that's not something should be, Council, go and request, why these people, you know, sidewalk is broken and not fixed, why people's fence is getting different color and was not being catered by the company. Please take, keep an eye on those things, please.
So when the contractor tells me they completed the project, that's when usually Charles and I, Mr. Smith, will walk the project. So in this case, nine alleys. We'll walk all nine alleys, jot down any deficiencies that we see. So anything that's wrong, we will note it, it'll, that a punch list will be created, that'll be sent to the contractor to fix. Nothing will be closed out, nothing will be even marked substantially complete until that punch list is completed. So we're in the process of that. Like I said, I just got word today from the contractor that every, they finished placing concrete yesterday. So we'll be doing the punch list walkthrough. I'm hoping, you know, with the holiday this week, early next week, we can get that scheduled or midweek next week, and we'll get that punch list to the contractor to get everything done. But I, when I walk stuff, I look at it, if I live there, how would I want, you know, how would I want it to look? So if there's something that's wrong, we'll definitely get it taken care of.
Thank you.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmary?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-five one thirty-six has been approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution twenty-twenty-five one thirty-seven. Resolution to concur with award of the twenty-twenty-six DWSRF Lead Service Line Replacement Engineering Service to Hennessy Engineers. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
So as you guys may recall, early last year, so it would have been January, February timeframe, we did the public hearing, or I think that's what it's called. The presentation for the drinking water SRF, so the state revolving fund loan to try and get grant money, like we've been able to in previous years. So for twenty-twenty-six, they've awarded the city a fifty percent loan, fifty percent principal forgiveness for lead service line replacement only. So with that, we'll be able to replace lead service lines along seventeen blocks within the city of Hamtramck. Those are all listed out. I'm not gonna read every single one. So for this, what we're asking for is to move forward with the engineering services, because we have a timeline, there's milestone dates that have to be met per Eagle, so to get going on everything. And so we're asking for the engineering design update.
So that's the total of six fifteen lead service line replacement?
Yep, so approximately six hundred and fifteen is awarded for that.
Okay, the cost of engineering is three thousand twenty-six, three twenty-six thousand? That's just the engineering, or?
Engineering's three hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred, so yes. Construction, once we get, once we put everything out to bid, we get, we bring forward the low bid for award and approval by council, then we'll bring forward construction services.
And so the total, the half of his loan and half...
Principal forgiveness.
So this is related to the next one that we will discuss, right?
Right.
Right. Yeah. All the three are interrelated. Basically, this is a DWSRF loan that we have been given, approved by the state. And based on that, what they have offered us is a 50% loan where we'll be raising a revenue bond to the state with a very nominal interest rate of 1%. And they will have a principal forgiveness of 50%. So the total cost is about $5.6 million, out of which 2.8 million will be forgiven. And 2.8, we will raise a revenue bond, which will be for about 30 years. And that revenue bond will be paid out of the water and sewer fund for the next 30 years. And that, this whole process is a cumbersome process where you have to, you know, hire and we have to engage financial consultants and you've got to engage attorneys as part of the project. We, if you remember, we did that at another one previously also. But in that particular case, we were, for the same project, we ended up getting a grant. So we didn't go for the revenue bond. But in this particular case, we'll have to go for the revenue bond.
Okay, so before we approve the three of them, since they are connected, related to each other, are there any additional costs added to fund the residents or anything?
Well, they will be very slight addition to the residents in terms of the overall, you know, when we pay the interest and the principal. So basically, what we are saying is that the replacement of these lead service lines in the next 30 years will be paid through the water and sewer fund. However, you have to remember that half of that cost is going to be provided by the state.
Yeah, but the other half, so my question is, would there be a direct increase on the water? Because we keep approving things and then residents will notice, you know, be surprised.
They will be, they will be some adjustment to the water rates.
Well, this is an issue because we're trying to reduce the extra percentage that was added last year and they, people are complaining like crazy about it. It's like 20 to 30 dollars, maybe 15, some of them. My, my water bill increased by 15 dollars. But for some residents, it's increased by more. So if we keep adding this stuff for things that are not really urgent, like I know we've been doing the water, the lead replacement lines and we, we are ahead of what was expected.
Correct.
So is it that urgent to add additional cost on the people? You know, people here are, you know, their income, you know, most of them are on the poverty line. If we keep adding stuff to fix the infrastructure on the residents, that doesn't make no sense because we are expecting some federal grants to come. So why rushing to add money on the residents when we can find, you know, alternative sources of funds?
So this is, right now, we are going through the process. If we end up getting a federal grant, we can use that federal grant and we cannot, we can let go of this.
Without the pose of law.
So this, this is a long drawn out process and we did that last time also. Where if you remember, we had a $12 million project. We had a $9 million revenue bond that we were going to issue. We ended up getting a grant and we did not complete that revenue project and we declined that. So right now, we are just going through the process in order to meet certain timelines. And we still will come to the council for the finer approval of the project itself.
Okay, so, so now we are expecting some money to come from the federal. So we can cover that cost after, like after we approve, we can just cover it and.
Right, and then we don't have to move, you know, take this load.
So that's one thing. Another thing is the, the very high cost of service for the water. Like if, even if you, nobody lives in the house, but the water is on, you still pay $80 a month.
Yeah, I did some.
Which is like so much, I mean, I think, I already discussed with this acting city manager that we need to take off the unnecessary cost that's added on the residents. I mean, we are not entirely need to replace all the sewer system as soon as possible. I mean, there's significant improvement at this time and we expect some money to come from federal, like grants. So we are not really, like, we don't have to add it on the residents. Everything is added on the residents. We, we need to reduce the water bill as much as possible and as soon as possible. I don't need to, you know, plan, okay, we need 50 to 100 million dollars to fix the sewer system, face B or whatever. I don't have to do it this year and next year. I mean, we already did half of the, the project, we are good. I mean, we haven't seen flooding over the past three years. We have that jetter machine that we bought, it's doing a good job. So I will need to enforce this on the residents and collect the money from them so we can fix our infrastructure in a limited, specific timeline. I mean, so what can be done to reduce that water bill as soon as possible?
Mr. Chair, there is the water supply found a lot of money. Last year, we increased the 15%.
We need to take that off.
We take 15% off.
I guess what my proposal is, Mr. Mayor, we should take it off.
Take that off and we see how this go. Then we don't have to look for the, like you said, the basement plant is going to be, no matter what you do, rest of the life is going to be right there. Because it's all your street, if you look at inside, there's the tree grow up and, and the flow, water flow is not gonna go right way. So if we agree with that, last 15%.
I think that was 10%.
What about 10 or 15, we can take that off.
Also, you can put a cap for the next five years, not to increase any of our. Okay, because we were required after lawsuit from the residents to start plan and start working and fixing the sewer system, which we did. We already fixed the Goodson and we, we bought those machines and we are working. It's not like we are neglecting that. But also, I, you know, I don't want to talk unless it's confirmed, but we are expecting some funds from the federal government to fix the sewer system. We asked for a lot of money and they're working on it, taking it seriously. So I'm not gonna stop following up, even after my term ends, we're gonna keep asking. So if we get that money, it's gonna be a relief on the residents. So we don't need to actually, I know a lot of people are struggling because of the inflation, the economy. They're struggling buying groceries and stuff. We don't wanna make them responsible to fix our infrastructure, you know, as soon as possible. Yes, it's, you know, everybody has to take responsibility, but it doesn't have to be done as soon as possible. And we don't have to put all the burden on those residents. So.
So can you move on? The 10% or whatever the?
Not right now. But then, then council will.
So then, yeah, when we start discussing the question, you can just ask to remove that.
Do you make a review for the cost minimum? Make a review, they're gonna be same amount.
Mr. Chair, you can follow up. We always, like you and you, you still need to follow up with the warehouse, but do not have cancer right, like the Democrat too, then I can follow up too.
Yeah, well, let's do it because Abraham Ayer said he would build the statue for me if I solve these problems. Let's, let's try to get them done. All right, I think we can go ahead and vote on this.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Saddman.
No, hope sorry.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Going for this approving, right? Since we discussed, I'll say no.
Yeah.
Councilman Al-Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-137 has been approved.
All right, thank you. Next one is related to this one. 2025-138, resolution to concur with the award of one council and financial advisor services for drinking water revolving fund loan application.
Over.
Second.
All right, so that's the same one.
So need to hear a little bit loan.
This is the bond thing that he's.
Yeah, I know. So this is, this is basically part of that whole process where you have to engage a financial advisor and a legal counsel to issue these bonds.
There's specific lawyers that handle, they're called bond counsel.
Yeah.
Literally, that's all they do and there's only like two or three of them, so.
So, and they're the ones we have been using in the past many years. Jim is here.
Okay, do we?
So you, you want us to approve it, right?
Right, to, this is, this is basically just the engagement for these two, you know, services.
System, something.
Right.
Okay. We just, you guys, so.
I have a question. So does the city have to pay it back or how's the loan works?
It, the way it works is that all their costs are going to be covered through that revenue bond. So if we go for that, only then, you know, these costs get covered.
And you say interest 1%?
Sorry?
Interest like 1%?
1%. It's a, it's a low interest loan that the state gives. So, you know, they, they give you, they reject, like last year, they rejected our project. We didn't get anything. The year before that, we did get that. So this year, we had asked for several projects. We had asked for like a 20 million or something.
Usually, it's around 20 million is what I said.
So we only got this one, which is like 50%, you know, principal forgiveness and 50% loan.
Okay, all right.
That's why we need to stay there from Hamtramck.
This year, next year.
Okay, I am okay, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
This part of other three resolutions, so.
Councilman Al-Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Saddman.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-138 has been approved.
Thank you. The last one, oh no, last one. We had the three more. All right. Resolution 2025-139, approval to purchase, acquire and construct improvements to the water supply system and to publish notice of intent to issue revenue bonds.
Yeah, so this is basically a resolution just to, you know, publish the notice, which will be published in the newspaper and the public will have 45 days to comment on, on this whole thing.
Yeah, all right.
So this is part of the whole process that we have to go through with the state.
Thanks. All right, thank you. We can go ahead and vote.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Al-Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Saddman.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-139 has been approved.
Thank you. The next added resolution, 140, regarding the address 3381, Germans for closure, the house for closure returning to the owner.
How far, say it.
Do we know what was the reason for, for the closure or misintepayment, whatever it was? What was the reason?
So most of the time when council has made these arrangements in the past, it's because of some extreme financial circumstance, which is not the case. There was a address that was listed and the notices were sent for a period of three years and the taxes were not paid. In my conversations with this previous owner of the house, he stated that he owns properties in multiple states. To my knowledge is therefore not a financial, it's not a situation of financial distress. I think it's, you know, I feel for him. I, you know, I wouldn't want to lose a property either that way, but he assured me that he was aware of the requirements to pay both local and state taxes and this fell through the cracks. It is also not an owner occupied home. He was renting out the first floor for some time. We believe that there were rent payments collected when the city owned the house, which we consider to be dishonest, if not fraudulent. So I have concerns about making any award of this home back to that owner. I think the most fair thing to do, as I recommended at the last meeting when we discussed it, is to put it for auction, which we informed the occupants in the fall when we took over this house would be the intent, but it was not the city's wish to evict anyone. So we gave them that notice and just said that we would keep them updated about any plans to auction the home.
So, so was the four dealers didn't pay the tax? What was he thinking, like, like, was he aware or what? Did he think that the city forgot about the tax or what?
Mr. Chair, I don't need clarification.
Go ahead.
So same situation I had. I was thinking, I have one house, I'm gonna keep it or I'm not gonna keep it. Like those kinds of situation. I'm short of money, I'm not gonna give the money to the, you know, one county right now, maybe I'm gonna exit out. Then somehow I get the money, I'll keep it. So I think, so what we're gonna do? I, I think he don't have the driving license under this address. So we, what I'm gonna recommend us, we're gonna approve it. Depends on Etoni and Isabella, those together. And, and, and we have to do the anyway, auction. So it's the reasonable money, if we can take from the owner, I don't have any issue to give him back. Substances, we cannot clarify lying or dishonest, a lot of things has to go. But if we can go to offer him and there's the city buy it from one county and city has to make some money too. Okay, so all those consideration, I think we still can go for it. Then we see how this go.
Okay, so if there was someone who, who was willing, I'm not sure who that person is, to pay the city because of his mistake, to pay for the city certain amount of money, you know, the cost of like administrative cost, whatever it was, because the city will do a lot of work buying it from one county and then putting it and dealing with the situation. So now, it's not enough only to pay what you owe for the tax in that case because the city got involved in a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah.
So there would be added cost, reasonable cost for the city in case we decide to help this homeowner to get his property back.
That's what I'm saying, Etoni and Isabella.
Yeah, but look what happened when we have some issue from one county. They have some address, they use the address from long time, over 15 years. Not two years, three years, four years, he receive the letter from one county. This issue from long time, they go different state. The guy he live in house, he stay in the house. He love the house and he have every year they pay the taxes, every years. He do receive any issue from one county. One county, they send different state. They give come to inside the house. They do come straight. Only some August, when the city they come to stop the house. They do receive last years. They do receive like two, three, four years, like over 15 years some issue. It's not those complain, some take the house right away. They got some complain different address. People, they leave the house and he has the address in the house. When he has rented the second floor, they make occupiers. They make rental property. They follow the city every years, every pollution. Even this years, if the one county, they catch the house, they can go inside the house. They can pay the, the taxes, they can pay the water, they catch them. And they keep running with the city, they follow the city. They know they have some issue from long time. That's what happened. If they follow something, they pay right away. We didn't need this happen for his house.
I just need to, we did our best to track down everything that went wrong and everything that perhaps happened. And it was his responsibility, if there was an incorrect address, to still make sure that the taxes paid on the home. He knows that the taxes due owns a lot of properties.
He knows, look.
And it's his responsibility.
If he's not gonna leave the house, yeah, leave it, take one county for a thousand or 500 or 2,000. I'm not gonna leave my house to get out for 2,000. Not gonna leave that one. Every pollution from the city, they came right away, every pollution. They fix it. Rental property, they fix it. And he still live in the house and his, the address. Yeah, they sit over there. But some houses, they have a company for five, six years. Years in the years, years in the years. They have, they don't pay the taxes, they don't pay the water, they don't, they got. They have, uh, they don't pay the taxes, they don't pay the water, they don't, they got anything pollution. They knows every day, this guy, they don't know anything, they don't know anything, they have some, uh, some life from the taxes from Wayne County. Soon as Wayne County, they came in August this years, they don't know the last years, they know two, three years, they don't know anything.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
They got some big difference.
I would say that it took time, Mr. Attony, uh, I think if we get approval, I want you to award Queen Isabella and the.
Yeah, the council has control over the real estate of the city and then advised by the city, um, and it's up to you guys to make a decision and then.
We want to be a city.
As I had done previously and, uh, a long time ago, I forget the gentleman name, was he coming to implement director? And he brought something and actually offer first offer to the city employees, so you might, what you want to take it. So it's up to control is that this bodies, if you guys feel that way, approve it, if you guys don't feel, don't approve it. So that's all, and then Attony will go from the paperboards with Isabella, okay?
Mr. Mayor, this quick question as well, uh, this, his ID reflect this address or no? You said not, councilmen say yes.
I haven't seen his driver's license, I've heard it that is the address.
This is driver's license.
But that does not mean that it is a principal residence. So when council has done this before, it has been, A, in a case of financial hardship, which this is not.
Yes.
It's been in, it's been in, in an owner occupied and principal residence home. And this person has said to me directly that he lives in the state of New York, he owns property in him, traffic, he leases it out distant cousins and then a resident, it is not a principal residence just because someone has their driver's license on, you know, that address.
I think.
We have also people who are interested in bidding on this house besides the applicant, including a former occupant of the house.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think what we should, we can do, like, we can make, uh, city can come up with a price and offer the previous owner, if he can come up with a price, he will get it, otherwise, like, we can go.
Go back to.
We can go to the next step auction or something.
Yeah, I think since the city had to deal with Wayne County and all this stuff, I mean, uh, something has to be added for the administrative work. If the city council approved, we turn it up.
Let's go call for what please, if you don't have any discussion.
But again, I mean, if some kind of negligence is, is approved, I mean, the amount of money should be increased. I think that should be fair.
Right, we need to add the sentences.
Right, because if there's some kind of negligence, uh, then it should be added. If it's something that's just an error or something, it's minor, but the, the amount of additional money should be weighed on this.
See, that's why dimension, reasonable price.
Right.
Okay, that's all, okay.
Resolution need to the edit and then we can vote maybe.
Yeah, we do think there's been some degree of negligence, especially because they were collecting rent when they should not have been from the occupants, so just.
So the mayor is saying that we include the, the points that you're making in terms of the price.
So, so the, the resolution will be returning this priority to the owner, um, subject to additional reasonable cost. Based on the reason for the project.
Alright, I have to get the vote.
Alright. Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes, today everything closes, yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Elsumeri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-five one forty is approved.
Alright, thank you. Alright, the next one is, uh, same situation for, uh, opposite San Conan that councilman Sadman mentioned, I, I couldn't write them down because you mentioned three different addresses.
One one four zero five, one one four one five and one one four zero nine.
Second.
So I would say that if you're gonna do it for this one, do it the same way as the last one.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, offering second one?
Yes, I did.
But I think Isabella.
Open for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, so again, same scenario, we try to save the time. In the, the owner has principal residency, Isabella is right. ID and principal residency, there's the two different things. The person has, uh, principal residency and ID and that is the one, is we have to comply with him.
Not necessarily with the commercial property though.
I'm going there. If, I did a little study for that. If there is the commercial property and there is the upstairs friendly living, that living is the principal. Okay, so example, and also, we cannot give somebody else downstairs business to somebody and principal owner is still there. Again, it is maybe more cost because of demand right now, market value. So that's why we're gonna approve as the previous one, what we said, same condition, we will approve it. Again, Mr. Attony and Isabella has to go together, decide the call, price, and we'll go from there.
The, the commercial is different for the resident.
Is that fifty percent over there?
Yeah.
So you cannot know that, that's all you're saying, so, but the other property, if you rent it, that consider as a commercial too.
Two family, it's two family.
There's no safety.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, and here's, actually the mixed use property, like it's not fully commercial, it's a mixed use, so upstairs is like, um, the residence, residence, and downstairs is the, is the commercial.
Attony, how did you decide, you told us to do the same?
Yeah, same resolution, but for these.
Let's do the same the previous one.
Go ahead, please, okay, go ahead for the vote.
Alright, uh, Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Elsumeri?
This is a commercial, we can, it's not same the resident, we can.
He's looking for your vote, what do you want to say, say, yes or no, no?
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-five one forty-one has been approved.
Thank you. Alright, last one, resolution one forty-two, upgrading the video and sound system.
Second. Yeah, so I'll let the CIO take the reins on this because I want to sow this thunder, but he's been spearheading this and getting this put together. I think this is something that we should strongly consider based on community feedback in regards to our ability to not only connect with them in the videos here, but also in other types of situations that we might host here in the future with community events. So I'll turn it over to the CIO, Mr. Brandon Murdock, to take the reins and go from here.
This is for approval for the city to purchase and install an upgraded video system for the council chambers from National Communications Corporation. This is the same company that, uh, number of years back installed the current system. The cost of that is fourteen thousand, three hundred and five dollars and thirty-six cents. As we stand right now, this video system is aged, it's showing some signs of struggling, we've had several broadcasting issues. It's resulted in quite a bit of stress and tension for the clerk's office as well as the IT department. Um, I'd like to get us up into proper high definition, as you can see on the televisions here, the picture quality is not that great. So I would like to update us and get us into something better and it will not just be for council meetings, but any other events that we broadcast through here, it will just be a good thing. I chose to stick with National Communications Corporation because they're already very familiar with the signal flow. We wouldn't have to pay any excess money for planning or, most of these video and AV companies, they will let, they want to plot and plan where the equipment's gonna go. Uh, we already have that taken care of, so sticking with Netcom was, I felt, the best move here.
So, so since it's the same company, this randomness has been there since day one of the system, like, what hap, what's the reason? Is that connection or what?
Well, the issue came when, um, they requested me to put these TVs in. I felt that eighty-five inches was a little too large for the cameras, I explained that the aspect ratio in the resolution was going to look very out of whack, as it does. With improved cameras that have better lenses and sensors and the higher definition, it's gonna look a lot better here and it's gonna suit these televisions a lot more, as well as when we broadcast to YouTube. I've heard several complaints from homeowners too about the broadcast quality or when the broadcast breaks and then we can't broadcast to the public who may not be able to be here in person. So I feel it's a good move for transparency and to keep the community happy and keep everything that we do here visible.
Mr. Mayor, I think when Max was here, we did approve some money to, to upgrade the system here.
It was when they did this screening, the biggest screen and others, but it has been like this since then.
Yeah, the TVs are still relatively new, um, these were installed when I first took over for IT, which was about a year and a half ago. So the TVs are fine, we don't have to touch the TVs, this will be for most of the equipment that we can't see here in the other room, as well as the front facing and the rear facing cameras, we're gonna tweak and readjust the audio. I shouldn't say we, I'm going to oversee it, I'm not an AV person, but I will be there, present to make sure everything goes smooth, so.
You said fourteen thousand dollars?
Fourteen thousand, three hundred and five and thirty-six.
How come, how come you approve the eighty-five inch TV there, if the picture is blurry?
Wasn't my fault.
Can you do that different way, can I go to the sixty-five inch TV?
No, no.
Not eighty, um, let me finish. If I don't do the sixty, eighty-five inch TV, if it was sixty-five inch TV, what do you think the picture coming back to the better? Or back to high definition, if you decrease the TV size?
We wouldn't have to revert to a smaller sized TV.
Because we have a smaller back to it, we can get a much cheaper TV, not fourteen thousand dollars, eighty-five.
No, this is, I think it was understanding, this isn't.
If I, if I may, it's not the TV that's the issue, the TVs, you can, you can put whatever TV you want. The issue is the cameras are antiquated, too old. So we could make that a hundred inches, it'll still look blurry, we could make it twenty-four inches, it might look a little bit better. But we're gonna have this problem moving forward no matter what, this is something that we need to update. It's a huge point of contention with making sure that the broadcast is going smoothly, I know there's a switcher that's included that's gonna make things easier for us to put any sort of presentations or anything up, we're not gonna have to fumble with the iPad or anything like that. It's just gonna be a better system so that we can be more connected with the community and we can also bring this system up to date, which we probably should have done before, but.
The new cameras also have AI tracks.
You're saying basically when they put the TVs, they should have changed the cameras?
Yeah.
Didn't make any sense why they did it, they kept the old cameras with the new TV, it's not compatible.
It's like putting a VHS tape into a high definition TV.
And I did explain that when these TVs went up, but, um.
We could switch to tube TV, you know, the really heavy ones.
So the new cameras also have an AI feature, which is gonna alleviate a lot of operating concerns for somebody, there's not gonna be like an additional skill set to learn, whoever's speaking, the camera's gonna be able to zoom in on whoever's speaking and it'll be able to track. So just to clarify, the TVs are not the issue, we don't have to replace the TVs, that's not gonna be part of that. This is for cameras, broadcasting equipment, a switcher, as well as some, uh, some additional equipment that's required to stream broadcasts and do what we do here. So that's what that is for.
I mean, if we fix it once and for all.
It should be good for a number of years, the column, this is kind of a future proof option.
Councilman Elsumeri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-five one forty-two has been approved.
Thank you, that was the last one. Before we move to the report, I'll start with my report, which I don't have much to say, but I just wanna thank everyone for coming tonight and staying this late here. And there were some issues that were discussed in the public comment, I just wanna make it clear so nobody thinks that I'm with or against, I just want to implement what's right for the people. Uh, I don't want anybody to be, um, you know, to have their rights violated by anyone and I don't want to, um, make them feel like I'm, I'm opposing what they asking for because I, I, there might, there might be some misunderstanding, I noticed on some, uh, on the faces of some people. I'm trying to find a solution with the whole team that works for everyone, that may, uh, that we trying to make sure that everyone, everyone lives in peace and without, uh, having to worry about his safety or the noise from his neighbor, but at the same time, we don't want to violate anybody's, his, his right. So, uh, that the whole team is working on this whole issue with their neighbors because this is the second time they, they, they come to the city council and at the same time, they text me on, on every, almost every other day. So I want to find a solution that works for everyone, solution that is fair for everyone and a solution that's fair for the city as well. Because we don't wanna put, uh, a, a norm that everybody then ask for something that's not right. So, um, I, I will continue to work with the acting city manager, with the city attorney, with the police department and everyone to find a fair solution for this issue. And hopefully, everybody will be happy. But at the same, in the meantime, the police should take action against anybody who violates the rights of those people. Anyone who parks in the wrong spot, block that, should be penalized, this is no exception. So with that, I also wanna mention that probably this one, this meeting, we only have one, one meeting left before the end of the year and before the end of my term, so that's exciting, I'll be released in a month. This, uh, you know, somebody else will take the responsibility, but I'll continue to work with, with the city administration, with the city council and mayor. And we will focus on helping the community, uplifting our community, uniting our community and I, I call, um, you know, now and I've been calling for unity, um, no matter what your background is, you should, uh, we all, we all belong to this community and we should care about each other. Despite of all the differences in our community, between different groups, we are a good community, we are a peaceful community. We don't have any kind of violence, even though, uh, our differences can be extreme sometimes, but, uh, we care about each other. We condemn any kind of violence, not only in our community, but also in other communities, like what, what happened in, in Durban, that's unacceptable. We can't have outsiders to come and instigate violence and spread hate in our communities. This is condemned with all languages and we, uh, stand in solidarity with everyone in, in, in our community. No matter what your background is and what your religion is, we are Muslim, Christian, Jew, Hindu, Buddha, Buddhist, whatever. We are one community and we, uh, two years ago, I think, or three years ago, when the media from outside of our community was attacking us and spreading hate and division in our community, I called these people, I called those people opportunistic parasites because they only flourish and, and shine with the nasty things, with hatred and, and, and violence and, and so we reject those kind of people and we, uh, again, call for unity, to care about each other. We will continue to have that, our main goal and our main mission, whether we are elected officials or not. I'm not sure, hopefully within, uh, the next couple of weeks, I'll find out where I will end up, you know, whether, uh, here, local or overseas or in DC, but I'm sure I will be somewhere where I can utilize my, my skills and my relationships to serve, to continue serving this community. And I, I think we have a, a bright future for the city, we, I can see that we'll continue to thrive and, uh, the city infrastructure will be fixed, uh, hopefully, and, uh, it looks like the properties will continue to go up. That's a good thing in a way, uh, that means our, our community is vibrant and our city is, uh, is getting better. So, uh, no matter where we, uh, end up, we will continue to serve this community and, uh, I thank everyone who ran for a public office and, uh, again, we congratulate those who won and we thank those who didn't make it and we call them to run again, uh, and, and try a different opportunity. Maybe they will make it next time and, and we are in dire need for good people to serve this community and to run for public offices. It's very hard to find good, qualified people, so we thank everyone who run for public office and who's willing and have the courage to serve this community because it's tough, our city is small, but we have complicated issues in our city. It's not easy to be in the spotlight and put your life, you know, as an open book in front of everyone. That's not an easy for an elected official, especially when you run to serve in a voluntary position. You are not getting compensated for the service that you provide. And that's, that's a plus, and it's not an easy thing to do. It consumes a lot from your time, your family time, your health, your other jobs, your personal and family plans. It has a lot of negative effect on your personal life. But the good and positive thing is that you serve the community. You are making a positive impact on your community. So I thank you all, and hopefully, I will be here again to make my final report in the next meeting. So thank you, everyone, and we move now to the report of the mayor. Please.
Mr. Mayor, just correction.
Yes.
Don't call the last meeting, because I can call emergency council in eighteen hours, anytime I want.
Anything is...
Just call emergency.
Anything is extracted from Councilman Hassan.
Mayor talking about the official network.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, we should not forget about the holidays. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and happy holidays in advance, happy Christmas. You know, we got a lot of days coming. So hopefully, I will, I'll come again and, and do another report. Otherwise, I'll call Hassan, Councilman Hassan, at night to call for emergency meeting. All right, Councilman. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you audience to come in at least nine o'clock from seven to nine, long hours you'll be here. Thank you the people who is watching us on the live on the TVs. Actually, it's end of, almost end of the year coming, another one meeting, we passed one year there. I'd like to congratulate again the people who run for the office, especially who own and who cannot own, still you make a big difference for the community. You are, you serve the community and you intention to serve the community too. We, whatever we discuss in this council, actually, I'm thinking for try our best from our knowledge to serve the community. And we put, especially I put Hamtramck first. It is my intention, Hamtramck, if Hamtramck going, I gonna be, whole council gonna be going, everybody gonna be going. Thank you to listening me and the people who in Hamtramck, Michigan, here and abroad, everybody, from me and my family, happy Thanksgiving in JY. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman, go ahead.
Thanks for everybody come here to the listen to us. It's very important meeting also. And I especially like to thank Mr. Muhyid Mahmood, Councilman. He impressed me and he impressed lots of people how the primary to the November, how his leadership, his team came out and forward, make a good competition with the strong candidate, Adam Al-Harbi. So Mr. Muhyid Mahmood, you're not alone. Your leadership proven, anywhere you run, and we will support you. The other day, even my Mr. Mayor also support me what I'm talking. So your leadership significantly recognized and improved. Thanks for working hard with our community. I hope you still gonna be with us, part of our community, and any committee we do, and you will be one of them. So again, thank you. And also, Mr. Mayor, we make one mistake today. No matter what, if the results certified from Wayne County, as soon as Mr. Mayor Adam Al-Harbi-elect came into the, the room, we previous practice, we should suspend the law, recognize the elected official, no matter what. So sometime we forget that. So I'd like to recognize Mayor-elect, Mr. Adam Al-Harbi. Also, community, our, our community is very good, community know for nothing. Again, the resolution today, we had earlier oversight committee for the police department, again, our police department doing excellent job. Hamtramck Police Department, the, within couple of minutes, always at the incident. Okay, so it is, it is recognized by the Michigan State, and, and no question about it. That the committee is happening is to make a more relationship, some of the incident what happened, make sure it's not gonna happen again. That's all. Relationship between the community and the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more report?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Councilman Hassan, for your recognition. Thank you, everyone. Nothing much to say. I wish everybody have a great Thanksgiving and have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman.
Thanks everyone for joining us tonight. I think we should, the water bill lessens possible, maybe in the next meeting. And the police oversight committee would be a great addition to, to the city. And I think our police department is doing great, but this will also like make a new addition to the police department to make them more better. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and enjoy your time in the family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Sumari.
Thank you for everyone come today, this meeting, and happy Thanksgiving. And thank everyone resident living in Hamtramck. Respect all the resident living in Hamtramck. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we move back to the second round of public comments, please. First up, we have Mark Corey.
Thank you again. I just wanna switch gears, discuss something else that's, that's been the news recently, all about the election controversies, various ones that occurred involving Hamtramck. Last week, I gave a interview to Mr. Kirchner, which was on his Hamtramck Public Library channel, and it's gotten a lot of attention, which is good. But just to let you know some of the histories we had here. Since 2013, I've talked to people in the community, I had Bob Zolz from a C. Clerk, he knew a lot about elections, and he was only really turned beyond election fraud. He said, it doesn't exist, it's been here for, for decades. It's been around here. I was C. Clerk, I, I caught it. I remember one guy ran for C. Council and told me, he wanted to check when the primary, because he voted the primary, wants to see who voted the primary, he's gonna hit those houses and, and, and those people. So he went to a lady's house, and said, I wanna congratulate you and your, your husband for voting in the last ten years of every election. And her response was, my husband was dead for fifteen years. Okay? So that's some of the stuff we have in Durban, are here in Durban. Just wanna mention one more thing about, anecdotally, several years ago, the income tax division sent out a thousand notices, certain people are rich and voters, or not paying their taxes. So they sent out these thousand letters, two hundred people wrote back, I don't live in this city. Next question was, well, if you're not living in the city, what, you know, why are you, why are you a rich voter here? And then they didn't say anything. So it was clear there is a number of people that are involved in some kind of large-scale vote fraud here. Okay? They're doing, they're, they're living outside the city, but voting our elections. Hundreds of people, and there's more than just that. I mean, the stories went on for years about this stuff. When 2013, we had an Arvada Sanne, it was really ballot harvesting. What kind of penalty you get? I needed to pay a hundred dollars, no probation. I mean, it was, it was simple. So this, this kind of developed over time. You know, there's saying about people who dump these ballots in the, in the boxes. Well, it turns out, there was a movie called Two Thousand Mules, I think it was by, by an Indian guy, it's, okay? It was a film, and it had, one of the, the trailer showed one guy who was dumping all these ballots into an election box and leaving. And the leader Suki says, you know what? I come from a big family. Those are all my relatives, my wife and my kids live with me, they all vote. So I mean, it's not really clear. People were asking, why we process people with the ballot boxes? They drive, they haul these ballots in with a box? And the big question is, why just put in the mail, no more catch you? You know, don't put it from a camera, dump the ballots in. Lots of stuff we've had here. We've had here for a long time. All these questions going on, it's every election. In fact, they, Amanda loves Secretary of State, okay? She's running for Secretary of State. And I said, in Hamtramck, the, the kind of, it's in every election. It's not that going back ten years, it's every single election we have these questions. So question is, what do we do about it? Have to do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Ahmed Sharauf.
Once again, this time it's gonna be in English real quick. The reason why that I speak in Arabic, because for the past, for a year and a half, I've been attacked from the same group, group of people. I can't say, I think that's not gonna be discrimination, Yemeni people from certain area. What happened is, that day, I was attacked in front of the election, was the senior citizen building. The mayor was attended, Mr. Muhyid Mahmood was attended. I explained to you in English what happened, you don't even say a word, you don't even make announcement that I was threatened, my life, and, and, and even if I explained that to you in English. So the reason why I'm delivering that in Arabic to people to know that we are in America, I was threatened to burn my house and, and bomb my house in Yemen. No one, not even the mayor of Hamtramck, make announcement, those kind of threat cannot be publicly or unpublicly. I, I, I deliver that to you. I'm not blaming you, in the, in the meantime, I am. This is your city, and I am an American. And that would happen in front of you, Mr. Mayor.
This should be addressed by the police department.
The police came in here and even do nothing. Fifteen people was attacking me for doing my freedom as an American. I get a personal threat in front of the chief of police that my house will be burned. My car got broken one day. I mean, till when? I mean, do you want me to get killed? Or my daughter get, you know, something to her? And then me following the rules? It's only certain group of people from Yemen. The, well, that, that, sorry, what his name is, Nahsham, he's literally said, we're gonna broke or break in his mouth. He encouraging all Hamtramck people to go and beat me up. Till when, Mr. Mayor, you're gonna let that happen? I don't even see announcement from you to just stop it. It was publicly, and now I am making this to all Americans. I am an American citizen, I'm practicing my right. Once again, I'm educating the non-Arabic people how to be a true American. Thank you very much, and God bless America. Thank you.
Matt Fizelli.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the service that you guys do for the city. I just have to say, I volunteer every weekend for the Every Neighbor Program. You know, we use a lot of our personal cars, our personal vehicles, things like that. So you guys approving that F-150 for us to use will go to really good use. We service about thirty houses over the summer and even more than that over the winter. And, you know, we shovel snow, cut grass, do repairs on garages, things like that, just things to improve the quality of life for residents of the city. So we appreciate you guys' dedication to the, to that. And then, you know, I do also have to say, I respect the, the Hamtramck police, they have the hardest job in the world, really. You know, and they, and they do a really good job of it. But establishing an oversight committee for the police will only increase the connection that the police has to the community, and it will increase transparency. I, I don't think it's a bad thing. Like I said, I'm, I'm pro the Hamtramck police, they are awesome, but I think only establishing that committee will only help. So appreciate you guys' service. Thank you. Happy Turkey Day. Thanks, guys.
Next up, Manayd Al-Hamid.
Good afternoon. First thing, just wanna say, thanks, Sherif, for every single thing you be doing. And I do work maintenance, and I, I take care of over three hundred and fifty apartment for seniors, seniors people. And I'm the first to make, see if anything happened. And I just wanna know, for the city hall next up, next door, in 2114 Hall Brook, has he knows any safety first for not to do fireworks or not speed or, or hiring somebody like every other facility? Why he's not addressing the issue like the right side? I want, I wanna know why he has not post any single sign, which is let people know not to speed or, not speed, or even help the city? So just wanna know if he's gonna hire somebody, or we're gonna, how we're gonna address the issue? Would be, would be a better for us to help our sheriff talk to this guy, to hire someone just like everyone, everyone else? And I hope whatever I just say will help. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Mr. Airam Al-Harbi.
Mayor, Council, everyone else, good evening. First, I wanna say thank you to all of you. Thank you to the mayor for the almost perfect attendance for the past four years and for the good job you did. Also, I thank you to Hamad Hassan for the recognition. And congratulations to Abu Moussa. And Muhyid, you did a good run, and I wish you the best of luck. And to the rest of you, thank you. So I also wanna point out that we gotta be careful when passing resolutions on things that would increase the water bills. You know, I've seen few resolutions. The mayor explained that people are tired of the high water bills, and they keep increasing. And throughout the campaign, I've listened to people, and they complain about how much the water bill is increasing every time. So that's something that we gotta be careful. I mean, with grants, you just gotta make sure that we apply for grants, and with loans, we gotta be careful with that, because that would only increase the water bills. The other thing is, the last thing is, with the cameras, it's a good idea, but I think you should add more cameras on the city clerk as well. Not to blame the city clerk's office, but we have city votes go there, so we gotta make sure that we do have cameras over there. But that's all I have. Happy Thanksgiving. Take it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We are taking corrective action with the clerk's office to, to upgrade it. So you're absolutely right.
Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, can I take like ten seconds for Mr. Sharauf? On what you say about the informing about the issues that are going on in front of the senior center in the election day? But that was the election day, and I don't know what things occurred between you and other people. I know you, they are all are going in really angry to your face, but in the meantime, Rana Dampina, police too came in, so it's not my...
Oh, you witnessed it, sir?
I, I'm witness, I see that, that's true. But I don't know my place to say something or stop somebody, because police was involved, and, you know, I'm running for office, I don't wanna get into the fight really of the election day, and people think that I'm fighting, basically, you know? So that's not my personally liking somebody or disliking somebody, you know?
It was hands involved, sir.
We all condemn any criminal activities or any kinds of, you know, bad activity that I have taken.
I think we can have a discussion right now. It's just a...
Thank you. Also, I, after you did an interview with me, I left to the other community center. I'm sorry, I don't blame you. I'm sorry, I know, but I imagine I was there, but I left right, right after, and I watched actually on the phone from another place. So, so thank you. You enjoyed it, right? All right. With that, I think we come to the end of the public comment. We have a closed session, although it's gonna be short.
It's too close.
Yeah, it's gonna be quick. Yeah, it's gonna be quick. So thank you, everyone, for coming. And there would be no vote after this.
No.
Please motion for the meeting.
Yeah. We will have the professionals, professional...